Are we good to go? Okay, I'd like to call and order the Finance Committee meeting. We have one item on the agenda which is budget reappropriation. You speak it over or do you want to present or is the mayor?
There to make some changes in our developed budget is in revenue neutral. Some of us looking to start to refocus some of our efforts. Public projects one which we were unionizing out of the mid last year. So, projects. Refocus some by tune, some of our efforts here. Molly, who's on the outside looking in, she's had a little bit of time now to be left inside considering. How do we make that more user friendly for people who are coming here? Also would like to engage the council on a more longer basis for, talk about homeownership made easy. Sounds good, but how do we actually look to break down that process not only by buying a house, but by owning a house? So, our fee structure for permits from other things that we do here. The synchronization of getting a building permit, the planning commission, zoning board. You know, we look at it and they work pretty well now, but how do we take and differentiate the connectivity from other communities so in fact we do deliver a product and create an environment that separates us a little bit? We know we have problems in other areas, yes, we've got high taxes, but how do we change that in the long term? So, this is really, I'll ask the council support for creating the first step in the design building process or evolutionary to then make the city more competitive, make it more attractive for the long term for how the people can live here, but as we want to improve people.
Questions? Ms. Portillo?
I just want to be clear, so this involves some personnel changes?
Yeah, I'm going to reestablish the position of the director of development. Even though that's what I would call overly simplistic, this is what the budget change is, but I'm looking at the, again, the bigger picture. We have an ongoing dialogue with the council staff, just people in view.
Any other questions? Mr. Riggi?
I assume the $48,000 for younger certification that the board needs to acquire?
Yes.
Anything else? No, I'll undertake a motion to approve this.
Hold it a second.
You move it. You move it, I'll second it.
Put in a motion to move it.
Okay, I'll second that, all in favor.
Aye.
If there's something else to come before the Finance Committee, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn.
Second.
You move it, I'll second it, all in favor.
Aye.
I'll call then City Development and Planning together. The first item on the agenda is whether we want to do a resolution for chef's officiation thing.
Well, going out for dinner.
That's right, yes.
I don't have any, can you just kind of tell me where, you know, that's where it comes from?
It's a term, Ms. Brazzo?
It's August 16th, Chefs Against Cancer, and honors all chefs on the third Saturday of August each year. So, there's a national pink tie organization, it's a 501(c)(3), and it plans men together in support of fight against cancer, wear a pink or fuchsia tie nationwide to increase awareness nationwide. And then this is specifically for their chefs division, and it goes across all the professions, but they have over 400,000 chefs and it's rapidly growing worldwide. So, what I was going to propose to see me is if we find out if we have local chefs that we pass a hinting we have local chefs in our area that participate, I was going to reach out if nobody else had and see who is active in their division around here. That certainly is a good thing to heighten awareness.
Sure.
To, you know, good causes like this.
Okay. Any questions? All right, so I'll undertake a motion to approve it.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And also ceremonial resolution for the Polish festival. Unless Mr. Kozier was proposing that.
Saint of Albert. Madam President, I'm sorry, Mr. Kozier had called me, he witnessed an auto pedestrian accident and will be delayed slightly. Fortunately, he's not.
Okay, thank you.
He would have called you, but he's not.
So, put it on as before.
Yep, okay, second.
Oh, sure, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, if there's something else to come before City Development and Planning, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor?
Aye. Call to order of evacuation. Chief here? Yep, we have Chief Sennical here to talk to us about the deputy chief's position that was eliminated from the 2014.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I wasn't in the position when the decision was made with the deputy chief's position. I understand it was to be revisited this time of year. For those of you who are aware of what the deputy chiefs do, we have a deputy chief that is in charge of our EMS program. He's in charge of fire training also. We had a deputy chief in charge of the hazardous material program, who's also in charge of the Fire Investigation Bureau. We have a boat program, a tactical paramedic program. We have recruiting, we have deputy chief takes care of specifying new fire apparatus and new safety equipment. Basically, our deputy chiefs and staff do. We had two, and one was taken out of the EMS line. So, what I've done is the assistant chief delegated the duties, some of the duties to him, and the hazardous material deputy chief also is in charge of EMS at this point. So, the question is, you know, could we use the deputy chief? We, for sure, the answer is yes, obviously. I think that everybody could use my help, everybody's very busy. So, there again, I was involved in discussion, I wasn't in this position at the time, but that is basically what the deputy chief position is. Two deputies, they have the training, if you will. So, at this point, my deputy chief, the one remaining I have, he's in charge basically of the hazardous material programs and EMS program as well as fire training. The other duties have been split up, split up for the assistant chief's position.
So, you mentioned the boat program in there, is that for?
The boat currently is not in the water due to training issues. And we had some, we had some mechanical issues with it earlier in the year, in the winter, but certainly deputy chief that we don't have is in charge of the boat program also.
Can you just tell us what the boat program is?
We have a boat that is stationed down the river for water emergencies, if you will. We staff it, we actually don't staff, it's not staffed, it's in the water, and in that way we have emergency, you know, we pull people off the apparatus and send them down the river for whatever type of emergencies that we may occur. But, one of the deputies would be involved in training and organizing that program.
So, obviously, this position is not funded in the 2014 budget.
No, it's not.
So, have you talked to Ms. DiGenova about any, how that would look financially for the rest of 2014 or?
Well, we haven't really discussed it in detail. There is some money available in the salary line, but overall, we haven't discussed it too much in detail.
Questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Riggi?
You say you have some money in the salary line right there?
Well, there's a lot of lines in the budget, but there's some due to some retirements who have some money in the house. You know, we're also going to be hiring people.
Do you know how much?
I know how much.
Well, I guess the one thing I can say is the way that the fire department funding out projects into the latter part of 2014 is that although it will be some reduced expenses compared to budget and senior lines, if you look at the department overall, I mean that it probably will be over budget for overtime costs.
Yes.
Other questions?
Are you asking for this position to be reinstated immediately?
But let's be clear, the administration is not asking for this position to be reinstated.
This is just for seeing if we can, okay. Would that be your desire, I guess?
Sure.
Okay. So, we talked about 2014, have you, I mean, the reason it got cut out is because there was not enough money, you know, because of budgetary. So, in looking at that, have you talked to our funding department, like going forward, what that would look like for your department? I mean, that's one of the reasons that it was, I'm not saying it's not necessary, obviously, based on what you stated it is.
We're looking at the budget for next year currently, yes.
And what kind of impact has it had not having this position? You described that you had to assign some other duties. Is this increasing overtime in those particular positions where you had to reassign duties?
It's not increased your overtime line. There again, it wasn't here when we had it, so we're just, we're shuffling duties around, we're covering other people and, you know, sure, we're running a little thin.
Yes, Mr. Riggi?
So, are we having all these duties covered?
Currently, we are, yes. It's not easy.
I just want to be clear, you know, the city's under pressure, you know, all the early people would like more staffing, like more resources to manage what we have. Chief Sennical is actually, you know, fairly impressive track record in his short tenure. If you look at the number of arsonists, sorry, we're running right now, I think 100%, maybe 120 cases. Know that is eight percent. They're working together, they're using resources that we have, and we're delivering results at a high level, which the community ought to be proud of, and feel confident that the services are there only again. That requires everybody to sometimes tighten their belt and work within the realities of the value that we have.
Yeah, I don't think anybody is trying to suggest that, at least, excuse me, that the fire department isn't running, you know, well, and that everybody's not doing the job. I think it's more that, you know, if we can create a stronger infrastructure, following changes do happen, like the chief retiring and things that'll make for a good, smooth transition and, you know, good, solid, you know, support within the fire department as one of the busiest fire departments in the state, that would be a good thing, right? So, you know, I think it's just something we should continue to look at and talk about every, you know, little bit as the council committed to when they decided not to reinstate deposition. Because ultimately, for taxpayer, for $100,000 just home, it's about $4 a year. And I think that that's something that the public should weigh in on too, on whether that's of value to them. So, I want to keep being a squeaky wheel about it, but any other comments or questions, Mr. Riggi?
Just a question for the chief.
Sure.
How is this been working so far, chief, with this position out of the budget? How is it been working as far as you?
Well, we're asking the existing deputy chief, basically, they wear two hats, and the new assistant chief is, you know, driving a lot of the duties, not having to go in the water or, you know, take some of the duties away that we normally would have.
But overall, I mean, it's been, it's fallen off the wagon, I assume. Because, I mean, I have to agree with the mayor said, we have so many department heads who are in 20 hats right now, so it's not unusual, within the city, it's connected. We have the parks department and maintenance, and it's all coming under one person, so I understand what this is all coming from, but right now with the belt tightening, you know, a lot of people are asking to do extra duties, and if they can step up to it, they can do those duties, I think that's worth it. But I agree, we have to keep, you know, addressing this and see what new revenue may come in, if there can be a quarter or not, but we have problems in a lot of departments where people are really overworked and overtaxed as far as the work that they're doing. So, I'm glad to see you can keep everything going, you know, to which I have. That speaks well of you, chief.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Other questions or comments? Okay, chief, thank you. What is to amend Chapter 138, property inspection, Mr. Root and Mearon?
We have looked at some goals for some, you know. One of the cycles were Carl and Paula Decker's to approve that.
Yes.
And I'm not sure why it's on today, but I spoke with Carl, and he said that he's been in the process of going out to other municipalities, looking at what statutes they've got with respect to this issue, and he's working on drafting it, and as soon as he gets the final draft for your plan review, he will present it to you. So, I would suggest that this building is just a whole part of the cycle.
Just with clarity then on the agenda, because we were told just to hold it toward till next cycle. So, you're saying hold it indefinitely until you're told?
Hold it till next cycle.
I'm sorry, you said Mr. Paul Decker was again?
Yes.
Mr. Mearon, can you follow?
Yes, I will follow to make sure that we have it in two weeks.
Erie Boulevard supplemental agreement with the New York State Department of Transportation, Mr. Wallin.
Great timing.
Why, he watches it, I guess.
We have a trick in next time.
That was perfect.
No, he's actually there working away.
The air could just romp it tight, it would mess up the sound though. So, we're here to talk about the Erie Boulevard supplemental agreement that we have in front of you. The supplemental agreement is for additional design services and right-of-way acquisition related to the construction of the roundabout that period not. All the costs are within the budget, this is just a step in procedure. We had pulmonary design, we had right-of-way incidentals, the right-of-way incidentals identify which properties, portions of properties would need to be purchased to make the project work, which is similar to what we've had in other federal projects. RK Height, a right-of-way firm, was hired to evaluate the properties, the properties were then evaluated, paperwork was filled out, and that was the value, about $48,000 if you can't get from this form, but, and that is the supplemental agreement between us and the state for those services.
Questions, comments? Anyone? Okay, so I'll ask for a motion, except for great time.
I'll move.
Okay, and, oh, you don't have a second, so I'll second, all those are paper. Very good, congratulations, Mr. Wallin.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, did I miss you? Sorry.
No, I didn't, no, it isn't about this, it's just about, initially, you probably wanted to, too, when is Mallard Street going to be paved? Because that bump there is awful, can we just smooth that out until it's paved?
Mallard Street, we can look at smoothing the bump, but Mallard Street will be paved within either the end of this week or the next week. We are looking to do a, more of a significant improvement to Mallard Street regarding the width of the street. We're going to narrow the street by approximately 10 feet, we're going to install a stone lined ditch down the hillside of the street, and what that's going to do is pick up all that runoff, because what we've been doing is working with general services, because in the wintertime they complained of the severe ice buildup at the bottom of the hill. But before I did such a change, I've been talking with other consultants that I've been working with, I've been talking with other, even the previous city engineer, just to try to get the history of that hillside. So, that's why the delay, is that when we come into there, you're going to see a significant change of the hillside, hopefully pick up on some of that water that's running off. But we can look at, just for temporarily taking the bump.
Because traffic, even tonight, traffic's getting back to, onto Broadway, because people stop short, and it's almost, I don't know if there's been any accidents there, but people, when they get up to that, because it's quite a dip, that's what you are going on.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, interest rate payment, tax collection, that's me. So, periodically, in the time that I've been on the council, we've talked about the interest rate, we've talked about the fact that, you know, where's the threshold between, you know, what's reasonable deterrent for not paying your taxes? Like, we don't want to give a low interest loan to people that, because they choose not to pay their taxes, but yet where's that threshold that makes it almost impossible to catch up if you get behind? And so, you know, we received an email this week from a city resident that I feel has quite a compelling story. I've asked the legal department and also Mr. Waterfield if he could provide us with a printout of payment schedule so that we can, you know, certainly make sure that everything is, you know, as reported, but, you know, we have a hardworking person who's lived in the city 43 years, who went through a tough financial time and almost can't catch up because of the percentage rate that we're charging, which we know is necessary, but I just wanted to bring it up again and for our consideration on how we might massage that and what that looks like. Because I think, you know, it's worth revisiting. We've talked a long time, I think everybody even kind of agrees that it would be worthwhile to lower a bit, so I just wanted to open that discussion again. Mr. Riggi?
I agree 100%, 110%. I think we have to work on, to break people to buy homes, but what can we do to help people to stay in their homes that fall into a category like this? And if memory serves, this goes back to the days when our interest rate was so low, and even banks were paying 4% or 5% interest on savings, or it was incumbent on some especially big landlords to pay late, and they've been making more money, you know, with their money in the bank, and paying the taxes, so that's why that was changed years ago. But when you wanted to stories like this, and if you remember right, a year or so ago, there was a fellow that did give his veterans, he said he was in the hospital, and he did the same thing, he's in a neighborhood house in Montfess, an area that he grew up in, his house, he's 76 years old, and he fell into bad time for that, like $9,000 or $10,000. He was able to get a reverse mortgage, that's what he had to do to pay this off. Fortunately, this lady, I talked to this lady, her house is in the Canada because of the area, that's unfortunate for a reverse mortgage. And the house she bought, when she was explained it to me, it was my cousin's house. Then he said, so that's why, when she said, when she moved from the house, it's that's to be my cousin's house, which she thought it was, and it is, and it is. But it is a compelling story, the email that she sent. All she wants to do is stay in that house until her demise, and that's what this other fellow asked of me, and I think there's other people out there that feel this way. They're good people that I think we have to work hard to try to keep them in their homes, because the other point she brought up, it was a great email, is who else is going to take the house, you know, at that point, and maybe do as well as she is, because she's current before, she's current afterwards, that one year she ran into bad times, so it's a sad story.
And she's been working very hard to pay, you know, and I think we need to do our diligence and look at the payment structure and make sure that everything's been, you know, adhered to, but I do think we need to look, we're in the 20s right now, right?
What I would throw up for the council's consideration is, you have a prerogative for the interest in penalties, but on the, just the fundamental overall policy that you might want to look at, the two-tiered system, so if somebody has a STAR exemption in place, they've done the paperwork showing that they're a homeowner living there, the state is just going through the process of tightening that up to verify whether there were some abuses of it, and so that those individuals be given a different rate than investors. A homeowner here, maybe it's on consideration. And our big problem, again, are the absentee landlords, the investors, who in many cases should not be in the business, and I don't have sympathy for them in general, but understand the hardship of homeowners and how do we work with that? How do we facilitate people who get these financial blocks in the road and work with them? A lot of them stay there somewhere with dignity and they're not putting a group work in the city.
Right, and I agree, and I think we've talked about that before, having a different rate for homeowners that we have for non-owner occupied homes. I think, you know, the time is now, and I think another possibility would be, you know, maybe even lower rate rates period to pay off what to do if that person's making regular payments. So, you know, that's another thing to look at.
And I agree with that, and I also think that maybe we could look at something like, some of this seems like a one-time situation at heart. If that happens to anyone, I just heard, that if that one-time situation, we could just take a look at that particular, you know, their particular problem at that time, and, you know, like the DMV, if you fall, if you fall behind on your, I think, if you insurance, and you get to pay off as opposed to getting the penalty of taking your car off. You could do something like that, like if it only happens in this timeframe though, you know, it can't happen every year, or maybe even every other year, but if it happens this one time, or, it could, if it happens five or 10 weeks later, but maybe we should be able to take a look at that and say that not necessarily for you the interest, but maybe a lower interest rate or something so we can catch up, because right now, based on her email, she's not going to catch up unless she just comes to.
I think she makes it clear she's going to be homeless in the year.
Unless she goes into a huge settlement.
Discretion?
Thank you. So, currently, does the city accept partial payments for our taxes that are due?
Yes.
No, just say we owe $2,000, we're accepting $500 to?
We'll take it.
So, the lower that interest on the balance remain?
Correct.
Be 1,500 of the interest on that. And I know we spoke about it a few months ago, and I know if somebody again could just take a look at what our neighboring municipalities are charging interest rate wise, and take a look, compare it with Albany, Amsterdam, Troy, and what they're actually currently charging. And I do like the idea of a different rate for owner occupied homes, whether or not we can follow up with that, but I think, I agree, that was something we all talked about many months ago to follow up on, and it just happened to be this heartbreaking email, which I'm sure we have many other heartbreaking cases out there as well, that just haven't contacted us for one reason or the other. But I'd like to see some comparisons of what other municipalities are doing and what their rates are, and before, before anything else.
Well, I think the key truly also is if the person is acting in good faith and making regular payments, then it's a different, you know, kind of situation also. So, is this something that a lot of departments have worked on, a basic proposal in accordance to what, you know, other municipalities are doing? Is this something that we need to?
We can certainly check with other neighboring municipalities and then bring the information back to you, and then you can give us some parameters and then we can put together something. But, you know, I will give you the information.
Okay. So, we'll put it on for two weeks, and then who would I need to touch base with? Carl, Mr. Paul Decker?
I'll take care of that.
Okay, okay, yes.
And while you're looking at that, you, the mayor suggested that we had two different rates for, you know, one for homeowners versus non-owners, can you make sure that that's something that we can?
The owner occupied.
The owner occupied, of course, it's a different.
Right, yeah.
Well, I, I think the mayor's suggestion of tying it to the STAR, you know, because there they've already gone through the process of including homeownership, we don't need to do further checking, is that, is that something that's acceptable?
That sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
Well, one exception, are we making that a requirement? Because just, don't forget, this is the first year that we had to all re-up, re, put the new applications for STAR. And I just can't wait until next year when people see their tax bills and didn't do that. You know, maybe we can hold off and maybe laugh out, you know, maybe we'll look at that maybe a year or two down, but I just have a fine feeling a lot of folks did not reapply for STAR as we all had to do. This is the first year we had to redo it.
If you can get your phone calls, that's usually what happens.
It's going to be a pretty small percentage.
You think so?
Yeah. I think they worked really hard.
I hope so.
And then factor in the people that actually have an issue.
Yeah. But we do have
They will eventually get it sometime.
Mr. Brady had a question?
Yeah, in terms of the home step program, I know in this particular case here, it was extended to December 31st. Do we have additional extension? No. No, we don't want. Can we look at maybe additional extension if they're paying of today, they're paying on a regular basis on this case here?
That's a paid law. That provision is provided for within state law, so.
It's, we can't by statute, it would form an extension, but if somebody's making the payments, they're close to paying it off, they're a little skewed by time, because we did not provide enough to do foreclosure. But this is also a long time, we move it forward and so those people we try and work with.
Okay. So that's, I mean, we can look at it on a case-by-case basis, example of, we have one in front of us here.
Yeah.
Possible, maybe look at folding off and
I would like to come up with, yeah, I would like to come up with something that's consistent because I think where we get into trouble is looking at things on a case-by-case basis because it's very difficult to make some of those decisions and I think that's when we have to stick to, you know, for the most part, this is what we do. But I think if we had a provision in there that talked about whether the person was making regular payments, like for instance, this person is making 2013 payments, or 2000, she was making payments for 2012, but it was going towards 2013 taxes, so they're actually paid, right, or they will be paid, but on the day she pays those off, 2014 kicks in. So she's still a year behind. So in those respects, I would like to see if there's something we can do in that period of time to assist her in catching up so that she's not always paying the year's taxes, but yet 2012 sits over here. And I don't know exactly what that looks like.
That's state law. Where your payments get right threaded.
Right, right, which is fine, but maybe if that's the case, you know, a lower percentage kicks in or something along those lines, if somebody's really working hard to pay that off.
Did you name the, first of all, did we make it so late after that?
Originally, yeah. But that's my understanding, that was paid off.
She paid that off.
Yeah. To the tune of, you know, twice what it actually was to begin with, so. Okay. Any other questions, comments? So we'll put this back on for two weeks, Mr. Thorpe?
Yes.
Close one.
We'll put this on for two weeks. No sidebars during government operations.
That's true, the sidebar too, close, yes.
Two weeks, Mr. Thorpe? Thank you. Okay. Next, water service and eviction, Mr. Kosh.
Yes, I'm back in here.
This is, you get a full bar.
Well, thanks, well, listen, don't bother saying that to him, now, wait a minute. Thank you very much. And just something, I just wanted, again, maybe bring our committee back together and we're talking about looking at the codes again, trying to bring all that up to date and perhaps even incorporate that into this piece as well. And as I mentioned from the floor last Monday, it just seems that we had a couple of folks and you had the individuals as well, I know two folks, both senior citizens, both receiving DSS public assistance, both raising children, had water service notices given to them where they didn't have the service repaired within an unreasonable amount of time, and then they gave it three or four weeks, whatever it was, they had to vacate the premises by a particular date. And it was coming down to that particular date where the one woman, we actually drove her down to DSS and she was able to get some assistance. But she was currently out of taxes in both situations, from what I understand. Both folks were currently out of taxes and really had no other resources or means to make that repair, which was definitely their service leak. As I mentioned, the town of East Carolina does make the repairs on their own and they bill it to their taxes, which are included, they break it up whatever it is, quarterly or even what do, what do they want to do for two-year cycle. But the town of Rotterdam is, interestingly enough, is completely different. They have responsibility from the water main all the way to the curb stop itself, where the homeowner only takes from the curb stop into the house. So it's completely different and that, to me, would be very costly, I think, to the city for us to be responsible for that piece as they do it. But the question I had to ask them today, Mr. Clark, was how many services do they repair? And he said it was less than 25 for the entire year because we were talking about possibly doing a whole crew. But he was off today, he was kind of answering his cell phone, so he's going to be back to me tomorrow and he'll send an email with the total number that the town of Rotterdam has. Just a person comparison is what we're looking at here. But I'd like the Madam President and Chair as well to see, we can give a committee of three or four of us on this committee to maybe meet again with engineering, with water, with PAU, to take a look at that whole code, maybe bring up the data and again, work with the mayor's office, Mr. Frank, and of course, Mr. Porter, see what we can or cannot incorporate. Again, to help our residents and the state's connect to you, both were in need and they faced eviction, which they had children, that was very, very troublesome. So thank goodness both of you were able to do well. But there was just my concern, where's something we can do, we can form it, and I'd be willing to sit on that committee as well and whoever else who cares what happens about it.
Well, this is something that we've discussed a number of times and I think everyone has concern with regard to this, but it's a lot to lay through, we even have most of the equipment, but, you know, there's been a lot of discussion with regard to, is it taking away business from plumbers and how much this is city, you know, is the city responsible for? I can tell you, as a homeowner, scares me very much because coming up with several thousand dollars is, you know, not exactly easy. But certainly, we can continue the conversation and try to find some sort of solution.
Mr. Bond is here too, so I don't know whether
Wait, can we do it for them? Does that make sense? I don't know what I'm looking at here, I apologize for if I'm out of order here, but.
Obviously, there is a need to do something, there's something, one of the needs to make the repairs. And also, one of the needs to, one is, one, Rotterdam lives in a lane of curbs. It's in the street right now. It's impossible to screw this, we have to leave our house, we have to elevate services. There's fewer services down in our area, we have a lot of other services. I think there are a lot of services still to develop, a lot of your system. But yet, on all four, there are possible, we know. But how do we do it to accomplish it, to make it quick, early, fast, before? What do we try and reach to assist them?
Well, if you want to sit down on the committee, if we want, anybody else who would form that, Ms. Browser or Ms. King, because you keep talking about, you know, we got to get it done. You know, let's start those conversations, let's start talking, let's sit, you know, on available early morning, breakfast without breakfast, lunchtime, whatever you got to do. But I think we really got to start getting it done instead of just bringing it to the table and saying, we got what to talk about and just not follow up. So, but again, whoever needs to point it, they want to really move on this if we, if we can.
Just as a point of clarification, it's not due to lack of follow.
No, no, I want to follow.
It's due to the fact that there are so many interest fees that I don't think we've really gotten to a point where everybody or the majority even are comfortable with going forward. So, you know, we revisit it, but there's a lot of interest receipts, but we can certainly open the conversation again. I think all of us would like to find a solution.
That's a good question. Is it, I don't know exactly what you're looking for, Mr. Kosh, but is it a possibility that if somebody has a leak like that, can the city repair it and, as Mr. Coler brought it, put it on their tax bill, installments or something like that where we're
Right now, no. No.
It's not, it's not, we do such a, owners responsible for the fiction, but the main, a little confusion on the core. From the main, from the main into the house. You know, a lot of things But I mean, could they hire the city instead of hiring the plumber, then the city gives them an installment plan?
That's a possibility.
Not that the city's responsible for it.
The chief made a point. We're stretching the, I have five people, Howard, Waterfield, it's trying to grow the funding, all the mini breaks and all the games. Also, this work, fortunately, a lot of the breaks came this year, where the homeowner and the landlord, a lot of guys have applications. So I think some of those applications, or research, or stretch, very thick. What we're going to do is, how do you pick a chief, who gets the same crew, who has to hire a plumber?
That's what I'm telling you, because we need to
Which is kind of where we always get, because we talked about putting it on the tax bill. Certainly, something we'd all like to entertain, but, so, we will sit down in small, pretty and I will put out an email to all council members to see who's interested and we will go forward. We'll spin our wheels backwards. Is there any other business to come before government operations?
Mr. Jay?
Excellent, I'll second all those, if you're all right.
Hey, Port, Health and Recreation. We're planning the agenda, it's signed in Steinman's Park. You'll find the information in your packet. Just for a little background information, Camille says now she came a couple weeks ago, they moved to the neighborhood association, as you know, developed, there is a regulation that's up there, they're basically taking, taking charge of making sure, you know, renting the building, et cetera. Initially, she claims they brought a particular fee schedule of what they'd like to see charged for, for the van, then with the bathrooms, with the indoor bathrooms and then using the entire facility. At the time we were discussing it, there was a suggestion that we have a two-tier, resident versus and a non-resident fee. And at that time, I did not, was not aware that Central Park already has this, but apparently in Central Park, there already is a resident, non-resident. So it's something that we can do without, you know, changing all the regulations to make sure that all parks are the same. So what you have before you are suggested fees to be charged, if there's resident versus non-resident, and this is what will happen at the public hearing, this is what will be on the public hearing, for people to look at and discuss. So, any questions about that or discussion or further input? Mr. Kosh?
Thank you. Yeah, I just called it just now, I read this thing like five, six times, the rental season. I don't believe we're keeping it open during the winter. I think we're winterizing it. If I believe, if I'm correct on that, otherwise we're talking about heat and everything else for the facility. So I don't think it's a 12-month operation. And Carl's not very clear from parks, just hear that? Nope. I'm like, pretty sure we have another check on that.
Okay, two years?
Yeah, I'm like 10% sure it's
Okay. So you want the timeframe?
I'm up to the timeframe, yeah, oh, you have a month, two months of the, yes, yes.
That may be a typo because down below it says May through October.
Yes.
I guess, it's, we'll just, I know it's a different that doesn't make sense. Could I get more?
I think there's an organizational meeting, May through October.
So we'll just double check the timeframe in this to be able to make sure that's correct for the public hearing information.
I think it's excellent.
But this class is a four or a block.
Yes, that's the way currently is at Central Park as well. And then if you look down further, if people want to stay a little bit longer, there's an addition of $30,000 an hour. Mr. Kosh?
Again, just want to make sure we're clear on that. So again, the check or the payment is not going to be made at the central administration office at the park itself, check or, I'm on the other from one reading here. And are we going to have dedicated funds, a separate fund for the Steinman's Park, some of the road we have rolled down, or is this all going to go into the general fund? Because I think that there was a question that they wanted these fees, Mr. Mayor, to go towards the restoration and the upkeep of Steinman's Park, if I recall correctly.
That is correct. They were specifically asking for an account that, so that this, so that when the money trusts and agency accounts, so the money would definitely come to the city, but in account that was designated only for Steinman's Park so that, to make sure that it just went back to Steinman's Park as opposed to being used in all the parks throughout the city. That's not something we can consider?
I'm sure you can consider it, but the
You should have anything.
Probably think you look at it realistically, is the revenue stream of this facility will be relatively small in comparison to the projects that they want done. So that if you're looking to pay for things out of this revenue stream, it's going to create a path downhill down the road, but the money's just not going to be there. I'm looking at our overall capital plan to continue to make investments in the parks. We're talking, we're about it, we've had general conversations, so that I don't want to mislead you where we think that this is going to enable them to do some of the undertakings that they want, in this case, in Steinman's Park. There's other activities that are going on, the work on, Jerry Goral, he has some people that are active on it. There's a lot of good things that are happening. It's how do you get in line up for money to keep those investments in place? Renting the buildings out are nice, but we get there relatively small amounts of money coming in to undertake those projects that we all want to do.
Well, my understanding, even though they're not going to be here tonight, is that they're really not looking after money to do capital performance, because it's not going to be a huge amount of money. But as you can see in here, they're including setup of tables and chairs, so I, my understanding is that would cover the cost of that person currently, we have it in the CDBD budget, and so that cover that cost because once that money runs out, it needs to be funded some way so that when someone comes in to set up, they have a way to make sure that cost is covered. So it wouldn't have cost, that's clear, but there would still need to be some way to cover that person, to take care of opening the building, making sure the bathrooms are clean, closed, et cetera. So that is my understanding of how they would like to use those funds as opposed to capital that would still come under this city funding. So that's why they're asking for that account.
And, and thank you again. And I think that the amount of money that we're really going to be bringing in, as the mayor said, is really very small, especially right now, we're still waiting the season now to even reserve any of these, you know, the filling for this year. I mean, if we're talking 1,000, 1,500, I mean, that's going to be a lot of money and that's not going to help any kind of general fund. But I think they are doing a great job over there, the neighborhood's really been supportive of the whole project, as the council and the mayor's office. But maybe, again, it's just, if we can work it through that, Mr. Mayor, if you're okay with that, just to see how we're doing. Again, you know, we do have costs as well, the city maintenance, crews going over there to maintain the park, cutting the grass and so on and so forth, that we haven't figured in on this. But I think it's kind of how we looked at it with them, is that we were hoping to set up a trust. What do you do with the Rose Garden? They get it all? Or was it a percentage that they capped? I thought it was a percentage.
Percentage too?
Well, we get, we get all of it, but we only advance on like 95% of what's in the account because some things will actually be refunds there. So I forget, this, they're getting all the money, but there's a lag in it, so effectively we don't pay everything
Yeah, maybe do something like that, yeah.
Can we, can we look at doing something similar to it as far as
Yeah.
Remember the Rose Garden?
That would be my suggestion.
My recommendation is, as the mayor says, Rose Garden money is directly into the general fund. And then there is important time to look at how much revenue has been created inside of that revenue, if you want, how are we going to transfer all of those, but that's not
That's right, to me, too.
That's right.
So it's, it is
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
We don't have a separate account for the Rose Garden?
There is a Rose Garden trust in CDB, and I have a look to see exactly what flows through there, I think. But I know the Rose Garden, the US Committee, it was just last, last time last year, we made city council about how much money was going to be transferred to the Rose Garden. I need to discuss.
It's a lot coming in late, but are we talking about using the rental fees for Steinman's to support Steinman's park as well?
Yes.
Because there's one thing to take into consideration, a lot of the fees that go to the Rose Garden are generated by fundraising, not by rentals. So, I mean, that's to be considered too. They have big, you know, events and gals and everything else that go, and, you know, so, you know, what is the Central Park pavilion going to be in? so, you know, what is the Central Park pavilion going to be in, that, maybe we need to look at the structure a little bit more, and whether.
The Rose Garden, so I believe where they do the fundraising is maintained outside of the city's control.
Oh, that is totally, it's costly.
But the rental, when people are using the Rose Garden for weddings, photographic backdrops, we charge a fee structure for that, and that is collected by the city, and then transferred to the Rose Garden committee, you know, once a year or twice a year.
I thought everything filtered through the city. And the other consideration, if we're comparing this to Central Park, is that Central Park, in this one, there's a neighborhood group that's actually working on it, and, you know, really involved with it, making sure that it opens up with Central Park, that happens strictly by city staff, so that's, that's, you know, kind of separates that. And they, you know, they want to make sure that the work that they dug and the financing and all of that, it stays in a certain condition.
Yeah, I'm not against it, I just began to think all the way around it.
So, I don't think we have a real intention, though, is setting up a trust agency account is something that we, that's their specific ask, so I want to make sure to ask it here, and make that decision, sort of, you know, to be clear whether that can happen or not. I'm, I'm certainly comfortable with that.
Again, we're not talking much money, we're talking, again, like I said, two miles in tops, and I can't imagine more than that being happened. If, if I may, what about the alcohol? Do you mean, does the city council, like when you have parks or events at Central Park?
Waivers, waivers.
If you look back here.
It says none, but, I mean, like, so does Central Park, but I know that there's fundraising, so should that be in there, except by waiver of the city council?
What are the special programs?
Special, or how should that be?
Right in the home, recollections, it's an expression of the mayor with an application, by a nonprofit.
Only by nonprofit?
Okay. So should that be added in here, the discretion there, or are we okay with just no alcohol here?
But I believe it is nonprofit only, it was really just last year that we decided on that, because we were getting the 11th hour, getting, oh, well, you want to get married, can we have alcohol, you know, we won our birthday, and so we streamlined it into, at the expression of the mayor, an only nonprofit.
Okay, if the council wants to, part of that permitting, I don't have the objection.
No, we just like to make you look like a bad guy.
I foresee some fundraising, I really, you know, foresee some fundraising with them, those folks are really very active over there, and I can see a nice gala or something happening down there, where they might want to do wine or something to that effect.
So you guys, you changed the language to be the same as Central Park, so that the mayor.
Yeah, so it's consistent, so it's consistent, right? Maybe we're going to be consistent, and that'll be consistent all the time.
So I think in the code, it is consistent outward, applies really citywide. The only interest at this point has been in Central Park. Then, you should just keep the back of the line, is Steinman's in Woodlawn Park are kind of evolving in similar fashion, we've got people who are actively working to raise money, do repairs there, they become models, looking unpleasant, they're like a year behind in the evolutionary cycle for Steinman's and Woodlawn are a little bit ahead of it. So whatever you adopt, given that it really should be something that's applicable citywide, even though tonight you're really talking about Steinman's, but rules in place that work for everybody down the road, because they don't want to have some device they over, so it's a good one, and it just becomes too hard to manage, and it doesn't matter in a way.
I think that nonprofit designation is the way.
Right, I agree.
I still, up to the mayor's question.
The mayor's your question.
All right, so we could, use that language to reflect what it says for Central Park.
We're going to add the trust agency account.
I don't think that really has to be part of the.
That's a problem, as we said.
Right.
There you go.
Any other questions, discussion? About Steinman's Park?
Very good job.
Well, we'll change it, we discussed, to make sure that's there for the public hearing as well. Okay, park advisory committee, Mr. Cozier?
Thank you, and thank you for bringing it down the agenda here. It's something we're talking about, again, we're talking about consistency amongst all parks and everything else, so I really want to, again, with the permission of the chair, to really gather and, of course, to really look at our park advisory committee, and bring them up to force and to task, and again, maybe even to take a look at all our parks throughout the city, of Schenectady, what we have, what we need, as the mayor's talking about capital projects possibly for 2015, unfortunately, it includes the roof of the pavilion, but, you know, the swing sets, the equipment, the playground equipment, in Steinman's Park, we have some equipment that, that's just unusable, I guess, I'm sure Jamboree, the others. But I'd like to bring that committee to task, and I understand they haven't met in a while, there's like five or six members that are already on the committee?
Well, earlier this year, started a recon, so we made some appointments, so that, I don't think there's been formal meetings, but informal discussions, and looking to continue to staff it, filling out the other positions, took in conversations with Larry Spring, who's the school district's role, took in, wanting to continue to look at the villas remaining vacancies, and give a specific charge to the law, and do some analysis of what the parks' needs are, put in place a long-term planning for capital investment, and just program deliver, whether it's in the city do it, or it's a gross code to it, in the school district do it, so that we create more activity and value in these neighborhood parks.
Yeah, Karina Pines, I know you talked about the Pines too, you know, the Central Park, the Steinman's facility, you know, in Bonn, DC. And again, I talked to Rich Paterni earlier today too, he's one of the members of the committee, I know, and he's very energetic to get the committee going and start working. He was worried about, you know, adding members from the different neighborhoods on the committee as well, I said, you don't want to get too many added, 11 is the maximum you could put on, I believe, or 12 maybe, or something like that. But I said, you know, what you want to do there is have your community forums, go out to the parks, go out to those neighborhoods, and meeting with those neighbor associations, and actually walking around the parks with them. So I think it's a good, it's good enough, it's really enough right now for us to still get out there and take a look at, at these parks. Again, if this were every area in this board, it'd be okay, we'd take a look, maybe start filling those slots, and even getting them to meet, maybe early September, and really let's start making some road trips, as you follow, to some of our neighborhood parks throughout the city, and see what we can put forward.
I believe the recommendations are come from your, like, your parks?
That particular board is solely my discretion in terms of making the appointments. Again, Rich Paterni and Tom Isabella have agreed to kind of co-chair, I think, it started, which has a long-time interest in recreational activities in the community, Tom, who's president of city council for a long time, and chair of the parks and recreation committee, so they have good working knowledge of the history of parks, of the good things that happened there, and also seen the decline of its own problems, so it's how do you, as part of the revitalization of the city, I want the parks to be part of that. Focus started earlier this year, before we continued in that, so I said earlier, it's really creating value for homeowners. It used to be, people bought a house in a neighborhood, they would see the park as an asset, and that isn't really the case anymore, and so how do we go back and get people to use the parks, take some ownership, and make sure they're, things that reflect well on everyone?
So mayor, if someone's interested in certain, can they, that maybe is not a person you would necessarily be aware of that was interested, do they just send it to the resume or contact your office?
They do.
And Mr. Cozier, you mentioned that maybe all the neighborhoods shouldn't be represented. Now, I know they all can, but I think that we should try to get people from different neighborhoods, so that, like, everybody isn't from one particular neighborhood, so.
I agree 100% on that.
I know we can't have, well, we could have a lot of people, like you said, but if they don't want to, but I think we should still try to spread it around, so people reside in different parts.
Absolutely, there's no question about it. Yeah, so another piece of the whole committee, too, and I don't know if we're following their, or not, Mr. Mayor, is the MAM regulation that we have in place for our vendors, our food vendors that are currently in our parks. Mr. Riggy was there, as well as the city clerk, who were there, a couple of cases, we have vending trucks next to Tiny Topland, who were actually leaking vegetable oil, leaking regular motor oil onto the trucks, right into our blocktop paved areas. We had gas generators going right next to Tiny Top's playland, and the thing is, we really don't have these regulations in place anywhere. The county issued them permits, and so did we, obviously. I talked, spoke with the county folks, they issued them upon inspection of the vehicle early in the year, I mean, we saw the one truck, it was, the guy insisted wasn't this truck leaking, and I got down on my all fours and looked at it, it was coming away from the tire rod, just dripping like it was, the Beverly Hillbillies coming out, you know, the black gold Texas T, it was coming out. But it's ruining our lots, it's ruining our, it was ruining our facilities, and again, we had parents trying to use Tiny Topland with their gas generator going on. But I wonder if that, is that something we can encompass into that committee as well? Take a look at some of the regulations, or is that something we would do out of our group parks and our, the health and recreation committee? We're just going to take a look at that, there's nothing there.
Why would all come to look at that? If I made a rare situation like that, there could be remedied immediately, so we're not going to go through the committee cycles, we're not going to do stuff.
Right.
Move along.
Yeah, and they could do that. The city clerk was there, deputy fire chief, we had them all down there, and they did a great job, but again, their question was, we don't have any regulations in place for them to really look at. That was the problem.
Probably, and to make sure that people act in a affirmative way, or less obviously.
Very good.
We have things in place to pull their license.
That's how, that's how we stopped them, I went up there and suspended their vendors from it. The law, the ordinances are there.
Yes, it's just enforcing them.
We weren't aware of them, we weren't aware of the problem. As soon as we were made aware of the problem, we went up there and it was remedied.
When people can do the applications for permits and grants, there's an assumption that they're going to act in a manner that reflects well on them, reflects well on the city. If they don't do that, we want to know, and so they're not going to take the appropriate action to remedy.
And I actually heard from one of the vendors as well, and so when we, I guess this is really a question from Mr. Thor, when we give someone, do we designate where you can or cannot set up in the park, I mean, that, because apparently, as Mr. Cozier's saying, except for places that just, you know, are not used to the quality of using the park. So is there something specific that says, this is the area where you can vendor?
There are six spots, there are six spots that Mr. Winkler designated in the park last year, they're numbered. There's only six vendors allowed in Central Park, and each one gets a spot, and they're assigned that on their license.
And is that what these current vendors are using, or are they going outside of those six spots?
As far as I, I'm, I'm not enforcement. When I was up there, the day I was up there, the two people were in the spots that they were designated to. Yeah, and certainly, and again, just to follow, they were certainly in those areas that were marked up. I guess there was Tom, Bill Muzak was there as well, he was talking about possibly relocating them over by where the dumpster is now, in that area where it's not a main walk-through, and it was more grassy area to set up, because again, these trucks are, it was, if you walk through there, we had people falling and slipping, you know, little kids, that's how they came to our attention, because we were running the scorecard at the other end, and they came to us with one of the kids, and, and I think, Mr. Mayor, you were out of town, so I didn't know, I mean, you would have been my first call, you know that, I would have called you at 6:30 in the morning with a complaint, but that's why I went to Chuck, and Chuck did a great job, and like I said, with the deputy chief down there and everybody. But yeah, it was just, it was leaking.
No, I'm clear on that, I just want to make sure that we're clear that the people in the area they said, if there was problems, or trouble leaking, that becomes a different conversation, that they weren't going outside of where they were designated to be, so, you know.
We're clearly marked, and I'm going to pull. Park personnel had spoke to them also, and the day that I went up there, the truck that you discovered that was really leaking the oil, he wasn't there, I spoke to him later in that day, and the reason he wasn't there was because he was having a oil pan replaced, and I had him send me the invoice to prove that the work was actually done, and so that was taken care of. The other situation with the generator, we just had him move from one side of the road to the other, but one of the things that our office did not know was there are six, there are six power stations up there that Phil Winkler had taken care of last year, and there's been vandalism to that. So initially, the thought was that these people could go in, pay the city for power for much less than they're going to pay for gasoline for a portable generator, and just plug into the power, but apparently those stands were vandalized over the winter, and my understanding from OGS is that it's going to be costly, number one, to repair them, but then they're always, so talking about putting some kind of a reinforced cage around them, so, to keep the vandalism down. So were those okay, we would have never had the issue with the generator. The guy is paying something like $10 a day for gasoline, we wouldn't charge him anything near that for, for the power that he would use.
950.
I should have said 950.
950, sorry.
But, very good, so, but to support Mr. Cozier's talk, a lot of this resulted from a lack of communication, and I think were a park committee involved, a lot of these dots would have been connected much sooner, and I don't believe it would have come, become the crisis or emergency that it was.
Mr. Riggy?
Yes, talking about the vendors, I talked to Mr. Cozier about this, there's a lot of ambiguity on the vendors that vend ice cream on the city streets, and for some reason the code is, or those things, like the corporation. I agree on that too. It says it's, the city engineer will designate, there's also only vend on secondary streets. So what's a secondary street, what's a primary street? It's not, because right now, he's been vending on Campbell Avenue, ever since I lived on Campbell Avenue, that's the other street, I'm like, wow. But the man may have a point, is that a secondary street or a primary street? Are we going to talk about, if the city engineer was reissuing that list, so it was clear?
Well, I don't know if that's been done yet, I know that when I last checked, which I'm not sure how long ago it was.
Well, the center comes more authority, that's for sure, but I mean, it is, it is a danger, because there's, there is a lot of children, I think they want to, yeah, and to, if it's just a priority on the camp, well, I guess that's okay, but I'm more concerned by the park.
For the kids, yeah.
Yeah, and the kids are running in and out.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome. I do have one other thing that I want to discuss under health and recreation, and a little, two parts of it. I think that everyone got the emails regarding Central Park and children's playground there, and the condition of the equipment, the sandbox was a little stagnant, and kids threw it out and never got replaced. So, you know, I responded to the email, that it's something, we were looking at all of the parks, because we have, you know, we have things that need to be done in all the parks. So just, I've encouraged this woman to continue to send the information, but I really think that in the winter, you know, starting, well, when this season's over, we should really consider what we can do for parks, because now it's August, and we're talking about concerns in the parks, which is a conversation that can happen maybe in February, so that when the park season opens, you know, we're ready. So, you know, there's, and I don't know what we can do about swings, we have, we have Stenman's Park, which has several swings, and some of the equipment's not at the park, so what do we do about equipment that is not at the park, that we can't replace this year? Is there a way that we, if it's brought to our attention, that goes, that comes down, so that no one is hurt, or how, how should that, would that be handled?
Yes, if there's anything, it's a answer, we'll immediately take it out of service or some way, secure it, so that it doesn't create an ongoing potential for injury, liability or concern.
The other question is regards Jerry Goral Park, and it's not, it's, well, I guess how you look at it could become safety, the playground that was put in, the new playground has this spill, I'm not sure what you call it, but the ground surface, so it really needs now, you know, it's kicked away, or carried away in different, in different ways.
Is that like the mulch that was there?
Yeah, and so it really needs to be replaced, and there's a, there's a process, obviously, associated with that. So the question was, is that something that we can consider doing this year, I guess, relatively quick? That was the first question.
What these schools do, because they're actually partnered with the county, and the county takes wood chips over there, clean wood chips, and they dump them there on a regular basis as well, so maybe we can, again, share services then with the county to see if they would offer their wood chips, but that's all it is that you're talking about, because I'm not so sure, but I know they do them in other schools.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, they double check that. And in regards to the sandbox, actually, you replied to her as well. It was later than you did, because I saw your reply. Going, going back to the schools, I was involved with all the PTOs. The reason that the schools doesn't fill their sandboxes, because the cats use it. The cats use those litter boxes. And there's exactly, bingo, it's exactly, and my little kid is playing in that sandbox, and all of a sudden, there are not marbles in there, they're a different thing. Guess what? Now we've got a whole different reaction to that. So I did tell her that, that that might be a possibility, as, you know, we could certainly take a look at, you know, ask Phil Muzak or Paul about the reasons. But that's why, you know, again, the schools.
And I spoke to her too, and she said, well, we have cats in the sandbox, and the cats don't want sand.
Oh, no.
I mean, that's for cats, I don't have, the cats don't want sand, that's what people are doing. So that's a health issue, if you can.
Yeah, that's what I was just saying. So we all were just, so that was good with all this.
So as we were discussing this over the winter season, we can think about whether we want sand in the sandbox.
Glad that, give it the fresh mind, we're fresh stuff, so whatever, that's not a problem.
With the equipment, maybe the park advisory committee, I think we need an inventory of our equipment, what kind of shape it's in, and what needs to be replaced, what shouldn't be replaced, what we don't need anymore, if it is sandboxes. But what's come to my attention is tennis nets. I think we have them, but they were never put up at Elders Park, to the best of my knowledge. Is there a reason for that, or do you know what the mayor?
I don't know.
And I think that's one of the things that the park advisory committee can look at, or something even before the season happens, as was stated, to go around and look at all the parks and see what needs to happen, so that before the season comes and people use the park, everything's in place, and we're not doing this again in August.
Yeah, maybe get in our budget, you know, maybe get in our budget for this year, you know, for next year, with 2015, you know, capital approvals, with the rip and all that stuff. Just something that we can give to the mayor, prior to, you know, bringing the budget to us. And I know they're already working on it, so it might be too late, but fast we get this committee moving again up, and just take a look at all this stuff, make some points. Good stuff. And I'm glad we're gonna park, so that's, that's fixed now, so thank you for all your support and all that.
Anything else to come before House Recreation?
Second.
I'll also take one. Thank you.
Well, for the claims, citywide reassessment. First, Mr., I don't think we're going to executive session, so you don't have to leave. I'm free to do what you want.
I wanna leave.
Fortunately, Mr. Aaronson resigned this society. He was interested in also handling mayor after sort of doing, coming back. Your, your feelings on the city?
Just give a quick summary in my position. The assessment that the law of court under, now, as the assessment's got to be pretty much coincided with the peak of the market, and then we're going to apply, and we're using compensation rate 122%, 123%, which comes close to, and reflecting this, but how do you level that out and put something in place that is fair and accurate? The one thing that I wanna do before we would consider the reassessment or starting the process, is to get the Section 108 line, the loan line up, to get the Attorney General in on Friday, get a press kind of consulting stuff, a little handback money coming in, where we eliminate the worst of the worst blood. We get rid of the properties that have just such a negative impact on all our neighbors. Some of these houses are in every neighborhood, no place is immune from it. And depending on which study you look at, you know, it's within 1,500 feet, it's within 2,000 feet, one of these properties decreases the value of everybody's house. So that if we can get a move forward, 108 loan, with the Attorney General, we've got some of the banks lined up who will put mortgages in here, it will get rid of the worst of the worst and start to create value. And I look at this, we're, we're doing the foreclosures now, and there are 240-some properties out of the list, that have been varied a little bit in the last few days. But by getting rid of the worst of the worst, if you add $1,000 in value to each one of those houses as we sell it, that's just that much more money that the city will benefit from. And so I wanted to clean up some of the problems, move down that path, continue down the path that we're going down, and we can start to look at the reappraisal, the timing of it becomes a multi-year project, and how do we line up the money to, again, be able to pay for it?
Well, my concern as well is the inequity in the assessment rules, since a lot of people have to share, how many people were granted relief to the fourth assessment we do? Just a touch.
I don't know the number, but that looks probably available.
But I mean, we have been granting a lot of tax surfs, especially commercial properties, so that automatically skewers the roll, no matter what happens, if it evens out at some point, or it gets spread out to everybody else, that hasn't been granted, that hasn't been granted relief. So the roll is skewed, and I think it's something that we have to address at some point. What's the timeframe that you have to monitor? Maybe because right now, the roll's really messed up, as far as I'm concerned. Anybody that's been granted relief is paying less and is getting pushed over, but those who have either agreed or went through the tax search or the process, so that's a concern of mine, as far as fairness, I mean, a level playing field.
Given the initial time would be starting to look at how you pay for it in this budget system. So we're starting with, and then, how do you actually do it? Do it all at once, do it phased, you know? Again, it slowly becomes a multi-year project, even if everybody agrees and just start going forward today, just the reality of it takes a couple of years.
Do you know the cost and cost to do it? How about the cost?
I don't have the good numbers, you know, what component we do in house, what you have to contract out. Again, it becomes the timing of it, so it...
The payment's pretty complex, as I was saying, you think we'd have to collect data?
It's, especially with early, aggressive building. Again, it is, in theory, pretty good, it's fairly current from the last one. And some of the other projects we're doing, we're trying to automate buildings back here. Troy's connectivity, yesterday, the Lincoln State Convention is some component that we're gonna do anyway, and it would be applicable to be used in reassessment. It would also be used in our analysis and planning, when we're doing it off, police fire, with the undertaking. So in some instances, we get really a double cap, and we'd be able to do it together.
And one other thing, if, when this happens, I think we really have to, on a yearly basis, update the assessment rules, since it does change, this market's pretty volatile, up and down. If we can do that, then I think we won't run into this big problem, hopefully, in the near future when this happens. Because that will, what you said, when it was done, it was that the people are marketing right after that, and you tank it for another couple of years, and if you're, you can't really test everything out. But if we can keep after it on a, I think there's gotta be a program that we can have that shows neighborhood sales, different neighborhoods, because different neighborhoods are gonna be different on the sales of house, and house rents. Because that can be plugged in, and we can keep the roll somewhere where it belongs. Hopefully, like, my point is, if we do this again, which I think we have to at some point, I agree with the mayor, if we're gonna at least start looking at the next winter process, that we can keep it up to date, so we don't fall too far behind.
That is, that is an issue within the assessments office, the ability to do that, the lottery, the information is being maintained, so that you get, sometimes the inappropriate application of, so authority within the office, you get, get just things that are very tight and sort of people in place, and get it fully, get everything computerized, get it there so that it can be maintained and accurate and fair and adequate for everybody's advantage.
Any other questions, this conference?
Just a question, so we're working towards computerizing it at this point?
Well, my focus is, this will be a very small component of that, we're working on a regional basis, really statewide, to get our building inspector records computerized, to get the entire housing profile, say housings, all our property profiles available and accessible for other departments. Same way you use, the fire chief go out, fire at 2:00 in the morning, they're getting there, and they don't know who the homeowner is, they don't know building plans that are issued, they don't know issues with the property that is an incident commander, I believe they should know. They don't know police activity, other things. My priorities to get in place systems that we can exchange information internal. And one of the things that I argue with us in New York State, and it's kind of my elevator pitch, that I make to state legislators and other people who want to enter, is that New York State has very sophisticated data for police and fire. But building inspectors' data, it is allowed to the discretion of the local building inspector, and the information that is required by the state is at best superficial, and there's really no analysis of that. And what it seems to be is, if we can do more detailed analysis of property, when it's starting to become distressed, where people aren't paying their taxes, you have a change in ownership, some of the grasses to one in front of the building, the house, if we can deal with that early on, then we're not spending all the time, money on police and fire services, five and six years down the road. These distressed properties were, the cost, you know, I suppose we have heard in the city, they run over the lifespan from when you lose a good and productive ownership, to the city is cleaning up a mess, plus $60,000 in parsonage. So we have potential of thousands of those properties, understand the magnitude of what we're dealing with. That's why our uncollectible buildings up there, actually, it's gone down, it's such a big component of the tax revenue stream, where people just aren't paying the taxes, they're spending all the money in the wrong direction, and rather coming to council saying we're gonna spend it. Doing these programs and equipments in the park, the caving streets do positive things, as opposed to keeping a mandate and maintaining distressed property.
Okay, just before we recess, I sent a memo off to the mayor, I don't know if you got it, half of it. I know Mr. Rude of Aaron and Newell have asked for a little more information on dangerous dog owners. I think everyone else is down on it.
Yes.
Now, I talked to you before about this, Mayor, this is something to probably do administratively, perhaps.
Just a little bit of ink? No? Just a little bit of ink?
What are you asking me to do?
To replace if there's changes or, uh, or, yeah, replace how like?
Well, page?
Or are these your own total registration? Registration?
Somebody's done it, or?
I'm bringing it up under claims.
Claims?
Yeah. Did, did we get, well, this?
Excuse me a minute.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out.
This could come out up under claims at some point, like the dogs, like somebody, those two dogs have to be on the safe.
It's like, I don't know.
Well, because I was told it was gonna be on, it wasn't on, that's why I'm bringing it up.
It's not our job, is it?
But you can be excused if you like, Mr. Kozier.
The fundamental issue here is, we had a horrific event with a woman who's walking her dog, was attacked, dog injured, close to the head, we put it down. What I believe you're asking for here, asking me to do, would not address that situation, because the incident that created the status originally for that to be designated, those dogs were designated as dangerous animals, occurred outside of this jurisdiction, where, again, Mr. Tunesco put out a proposal, and we can reiterate, the motivation for that seems to be more for headlines than correcting the problem. I don't believe you made inquiries with the Office of Court Administration, it's not the state police, even, there was a subsequent release that went out last Thursday or Friday, criticizing me, or it's just it's a press release, that's what it was, that's what I had to, wanna move away from.
Well, I'm looking to have it, we're on this site, to have it on our website, so far as, let's put these two dogs out in the picture. Let's say it's another dog that lives on Campbell Avenue. I wanna know, and I want to know Campbell Avenue, if there could be a dog that's been cited for being aggressive. We do have that, we do have a database on it.
Right, and that was put together today, there's, I think, six, four dogs from this year.
So can they be put on our city website?
Then what are you asking for? The location of it?
I'm just, I'm seeing, I know you wanna see it more specifically.
I wanna identify to a particular house, and again, to remedy, the Office of Court Administration has that information. And so, wanna get into this local debate of kind of a gotcha politics or press coverage. But council wants to say that we can do it, it's readily available on an ongoing basis. In fact, most of the events, like you remember, it all been very detailed reports in the press, local newspaper television coverage, where we've had these incidents with dogs. And again, they are horrific when you go through it. Fundamental and first thing that we've been doing is to more aggressive campaign to get the dogs licensed, and some hesitation on the council to move ahead for that when that was first proposed. We're now doing that, and we're seeing some of those results. If you look at the numbers in 2011, 2012, they're down, 13th, they're down, they seem to be lower than issue. So we're moving in the right direction. And it's the whole people count, and the problem is not the dogs, it's the owners. And it's so, to like.
But the owners aren't fighting people, you know, it's the dogs that are fighting. Right?
Yes.
So are you okay with releasing that information? If you want to release it to me personally, that's okay, I'll put it on my own page, whatever you want to do.
We can do that, but if you ask me to release information, it's already out, and so, again, it's more theatrics than stuff or subjects.
I don't think so. I think it's a link that we can put on our own webpage, or city webpage, so people can click on it, it can be advertised, and people can click on it, so they know, without having to search everywhere else.
Again, that is not the rest, the fundamental problem of making that available, so that you care if people, you know, maybe in a jurisdiction get cited, and then move someplace else.
They're citing our jurisdiction also, for those dogs.
Yes, it was last incident, only the incident before.
I thought there was an incident before, that, well, there were two incidents before.
I understand each one, I think there's two.
Well, Mayor, including with that, could we, you know, because, you know, Mr. Kozier talks a lot about ensuring municipality agreements. Is there some way that we could, surrounding municipalities, you know, regions, or the police department, or their dog enforcement, or whatever the other has, that when it happens to a jurisdiction that's extremely close to us, that they could, you know, let us know?
Well, this is what we're doing, we're getting the Center for Technology and Government to do part of the study. We're focused, we're using is on the code enforcement data, but we can create a platform so that all of this information would be available, so that you could put, whether people pay the taxes, whether there's some other code violations here, whether they have a dangerous dog. And that becomes a much more functional database, that when you immigrate the police and fire data, then you can manage the problems, and you can better set public... can better set public policy. So, we're, I've been working on a much bigger global solution, and really helping set a statewide agenda for, again, that data management provision would be a very small component, in my thinking this year, for.
Yeah, I agree with the mayor as well, it should certainly be a statewide registry, we're looking to do something, it can't just be the city's going to be taking the lead, because again, this database could be as outdated as within two or three months, Mr. Regan, I mean, our folks within the city, they move from proper to proper on a regular basis unfortunately, and let's just say we have 1311 Campbell Avenue where the dog resided, those folks might move two months down the road, are you going to be obligated to report to the mayor's office or to whoever that you have now moved and your dog has moved to Madison Avenue?
How do we do it when we register dogs then, maybe next year with the ones that Mr. Thornton registered, they can move too.
Yeah, see, I don't even, and that's, I don't know if it's in there, I mean, if I move and my dog is licensed, yes, and we are licensed, but is there a requirement where I have to call the city to tell them that I'm moving, and I think it becomes a liability issue on the city's part as well, if we're stating that we have a vicious dog at Madison Avenue, and all of a sudden I have moved, and now Madison Avenue, now somebody else has resided there, I just think it's got to be a statewide initiative, and I really, or even on a county level, it's not going to be county wide, but there's just so much liability issue here, I think, involved with this, and it's just more than just the city taking the lead.
I didn't want it specific, the mayor wants it specific, I just want to say it's on Madison Avenue, that's all I want, that's all I ask for from the beginning.
But if I move, I move, you know, my dog is not going to come in here.
But what I'm saying is not.
If you have a gentleman, then people are suspicious of everything on the street, where as opposed to actually identifying who the problem is, you think everybody, some streets are fairly short, some streets are very long, it creates a significant pressure.
I think someone will come out with some statewide, and we'll certainly jump on the bandwagon, I think that if something happens.
Well, it seems proactive, I guess that's not going to happen.
Yeah, I would love it.
Well, I'm not sure that we necessarily should wait for statewide, because I'm thinking back to the woman who was walking at, you know, quarter of the time in the morning.
I, I'm worried if we will put the four, I believe it's four, it's the past, last year, on the city website, City's Connection.
And I think that's.
You know, Jim has really been one of the least effective state legislators of the entire legislative body, looking why our state aid is so low, he's been dumped as minority leader, he's looking for cheap headlines, that's what he's done, and it's part of the ethics, the function to the state government, why they're so efficient.
My only concern is for a public city.
And that's mine too, I don't want to get into the politics, you may ask someone to Tedesco, all you want, Mayor, I'm interested, this is me that's talking, not Jim Tedesco, I'm talking, that lady who saw the pictures of that dog, and it's heartbreaking, so if we can save just one dog from that happening, too, I think it's worth it, what's the big deal, put it up on the website, this is a rocket scientist stuff we're asking for, that's all.
I told you, we'll put the four, I believe it's four, to go up and do that, solve the problem.
I just want to bring up a separate topic, just as a general statement, last, we very briefly before, we have a power property in Bellevue, that I think we've all been working on, but I would like to ask everyone in the council that we refrain from using specific addresses, because I just don't think that's fair, the specific address thing came up, but when we have a power property, or we have people complaining about a property, or we're citing property or whatever, I don't think it's fair for the homeowner to use a specific address, if it's being tended to, so, just trying to remind everybody that.
I can cite that, so.
We have, but that's, I mean, but, I don't know, to me, it's just not, I just want to kind of throw it out there in general, because, I mean, for people, other people's follow, like, say the person made a mistake or whatever, and now they're, you know, I just think it's a good practice to keep aware of, when we're announcing those.
Anything else for the times, entertain a bunch into recess.
All right.
Thank you.
Right.